You know, several five, you know, several $5,000 grants to businesses in the community waived um utility fees or paid utility fees for one or two residents who responded to the mailer. And ultimately, those were submitted to CDBG and rejected by CDBG because they could not find a nexus to COVID or a strong enough nexus back to COVID in order to fund and fulfill these. And this was done two years ago while we were still under the emergency for COVID. You know, there's been many concerns raised, and I would say some of, most of them, you know, quite legitimately so, you know, that I believe we need to do a better job. And I ran for this office and I ran for this position for a reason because I see the need to increase our sophistication of how we engage and work with our community. That, and I see that work being done with this current council and with this current management and city staff. There's been a lot of changes, a lot of it's invisible to the community, but it is happening and changes are occurring as we speak. So, in this particular case, the, the city extended grants under the auspices of CDBG, waived loans, forgivable loans, waived the loans, and then ultimately was denied by CDBG. And then the city transferred TOT money, as the city manager pointed out, that was not approved by council. City staff directed, were directed by city management to transfer money from TOT to backfill the general fund. So, these were not TOT grants, these were grants that ultimately were backfilled out of the general fund in order to make the city general fund whole. You know, that process, I also have an issue with, you know, that only the city council can approve the allocation or transfer monies between these types of funds. And what we've learned in, in my research and going through this and going through the history, and, and when I say I've gone through history, I don't know, I've got a few hundred pages of information here because I take this very seriously. This is something that's direct and relevant to our community. And what I've learned has, has been pointed out that the fatal flaw with this grant as it exists is the wording. CDBG has basically denied more than it has approved for grants that are either identical or very similar to the way our grant is worded. The ability and the burden to actually meet the documentation requirements is exceptionally difficult in creating that clear and direct nexus back to COVID. And the further we get away, the more difficult that becomes. We can't say now that a utility bill in March of 22 was due to COVID unless, you know, we need, you know, COVID tests or among other things. I just use that as, as an example. You know, the housing and community development is, you know, it's a, I mean, like I said, this is housing and community development managing the CDBG because the grants are typically designed for real property investment in the community, not something as subjective as, as some of the COVID work. In working with CDBG, or I'm sorry, with the housing and community development is my understanding that they have recommended that we change the scope in order to be able to set ourselves up for success. It's been shared with, on calls with the individual, with, with council member Kleinfelder and city manager Roberts, that, that if we proceed on the current path, our likelihood of failure is significant as opposed to changing the scope into something that we can actually achieve. You know, for me personally, in my professional life, I've managed tens of millions of dollars of grants. I understand the importance, I understand what we need to do, I understand the burden of what exists. That, you know, and, and something I want to say that, you know, to this community, if we could find a way to make this grant successful in its current format, I'd be Dick Van Dyke at the front of the parade, leading the way through to make it happen. I just don't see how we would be successful in doing so on the backside because there's other factors to contribute to our success on this as well. In talking about the project or the proposed project, you know, that our firefighters are our firefighters, they, they're here 24/7 to protect our community on call, whether it's an emergency or a public assist or whatever we need to provide and serve our community. There was an inspection done to that facility, I believe, at the end of 2022, maybe in the beginning of this year. They really found the station to be in, in deplorable condition. There's a great deal of dry rot, there's numerous leaks from the roofs, new and old, there's leaks around windows. It's truly a health and safety violation, a health and safety concern, and I would venture to say we teetering close to, you know, Calooshia-related stuff for working conditions. And while it's been implied that that's a responsibility of AFPD to handle, AFPD is only responsible for day-to-day maintenance and repairs up to $500 each. The city is contracted and responsible for any repairs in excess of $500. So, we are obligated to find a way, or we'll be in breach of contract by not doing our due diligence in looking at and taking care of that particular piece. A factor that we, we need to really take into account is the amount of time in the window that this grant has left in it. I believe the CV1 is, is, due date is in February, and then the CV2, 3 are, I believe, October, so, October of '24, so that'd be 16 months-ish. And, and in order for these grants to exist, you know, using the CV1 as an example, we would have to craft a program, develop a scope, a purpose, create the program, administer the program, pay for the program, have all checks clear before we can submit for reimbursement before that February 1st piece, and hope at that point that HCD would then approve that project and we would not be, you know, caught as a city with unable to be reimbursed for, for that particular piece. That would go for 2 and 3 as well, extending out. Another important piece that really needs to be recognized is the Fiscal Responsibility Act of 2023, or otherwise known as the, the debt ceiling legislation that recently passed through our federal government and was signed by President Biden this last week, is that all unspent, you know, part of that bill is clawing back all unspent COVID funds. Well, that's exactly what these are. So, the more time that goes by where these funds, where we haven't been able to close the transaction and submit for reimbursement, those funds are vulnerable to be clawed back. And we won't know if they're clawed back until we put in for it and there's no money there to find out, at which point we've still been out, out of money. I'd say, I think we have two options in front of us. The first is keeping the grant exactly the way it is and administering and pushing forward. In this particular scenario, if we were to push forward, we would be, as a city, responsible for paying out up to, you know, the 200 and some odd thousand dollars in grant monies through different programs. If we were to put out that $200,000-plus piece out, we then would submit for reimbursement and hope we get that money back. It's possible and quite likely, as HCD has put it, that we would not get it, it back, or at least certainly not most of it back. The option would be is to address a present, current health and safety issue that addresses the first responders in our community and address an issue that currently exists that we are obligated to do. We can get it done in the timeframe that needs to be done, and it's something that we're, like, as mentioned, contractually obligated to get done. And so, a, as it comes down to, the choice is, we could go forth with the grant in its current iteration and potentially be reimbursed for our funds for, for this, the, the new work, the new projects on the difficult piece, and then we, as a city, would need to find $200,000 of general fund to make the repairs to the fire station. The other side of that is, is we could expend that $200,000 within the auspices of the grant, not re-reimbursed, and we'd still have to make the fire station repairs, and now we'd be in a position of having to come up with $400,000 of, you know, of, of general fund in order to be able to close the gap and address both these issues. I haven't, you know, I'm certainly very much looking forward to the presentation from the community tonight, I'm remaining with an open mind, but from, from pure, purely a grant administration purpose and a public policy purpose, as I, as I come into this, that's the information that I have at this point, and, but I am looking forward to your feedback, and I'm sorry for being long-winded, but as I mentioned, this is a sort of a very interwoven piece. And Mayor, thank you for your time, I'm sorry for being so long.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sim, comments?
Thank you, Mike, you haven't left much to talk about it, and I couldn't agree with both council members.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I went out of turn. Okay, I apologize.
Anyway, all I can do is, is highlight a few of the things that have been said here. One, I think we all have come to realize it's, it's a very complicated grant. We, we don't have a lot of time to spend this money. The, the money has to be spent by, by February 2024. And, and as the, our city manager has pointed out, the paperwork is going to be daunting. I can't take exception to anything that council member Kleinfelder said, or, or council member McLaughlin, you both hit some great points. I think the bottom line is, the time has come, we have to make a decision. I, I think that we, we owe it to Plymouth to do something with this, this fire station. It, it's, it's shameful with, in these times, with, with that fire station has, has fallen into such disrepair. As council member McLaughlin pointed out, if we don't spend the money on it, now we're going to be looking at spending four or $500,000 down the road, monies that, that we don't have. I just think that it's, it's, the fire station needs to be fixed, and I, I feel that's the best course of action is to move in that direction. Thank you.
Council member White, and I apologize for going out of turn.
No problem. I guess basically all I have to say is everyone's made some very good points, but I definitely just, I want to get to public comment, I want to hear what the public has to say.
And I'd also like to have comments after we take the, the public comments.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I'd like to piggyback on council member Kleinfelder. I did talk to the City of Dunsborough, who has a great program with their CV grants. And they don't actually manage theirs, they actually go to their county, which I'm going to slaughter their names, Sisk, Siskiow, thank you. And they have offered, if we stick with our grants, to offer any assistance that we need in running the programs. I just wanted to put that out there, that they do have a great program, it is successful, they have the forms that we could piggyback off of if the council chose to go that route, that is a resource that we have available to us.
Thank you for sharing that.
Excuse me?
Yes, please.
I also, in the course of all of these, at least a year of trying to work on this, I have submitted the names of several consulting firms that have been done, very, very successful programs. Calaveras County is cited as one of the top projects in California, and the CV1, CV2, and CV3 done through, for the City of Jackson had a consulting firm that is agreed that they are, they know what they're doing. So, this is not impossible, this was never impossible. And I don't, I just, for the life of me, don't know how we've gotten here.
Thank you. At this, and I'm going to reserve my comments, I think my colleagues have made some excellent points, which, quite frankly, there would be nothing for me to add that they haven't already covered. So, I would like to open this up for public comment now, and we'll, we'll, we'll have public comment, and then when public comment is over, we'll go back to the council for discussion. So, I'm going to start with anybody here in City Hall who would like to speak to the council on this, now is your opportunity, please come up.
So, thank you, my name's Rob Withrow, I'm the Fire Chief for Amador Fire Protection District, and I thought maybe I could just provide a little bit of a brief background on how this list came about, or at least this latest list of repairs that are being requested. When I accepted this position, of course, one of the things you do in a new position is get to know the district and toured all our different facilities, our different fire stations, looked at our apparatus, et cetera, and pretty glaring that Fire Station 122 here in the City of Plymouth needs some work. And my first concern was, have we not said anything? Is this something we've just been sitting on and nobody's, you know, said, hey, we need some help here? And I did a little digging, and that's not the case. The farthest I can go back is 2018 where we did inspection, I wasn't here then, I can't speak to the details of that, but I do have some documents that document some of the same things we're talking about today. So, that's just a brief background on how we got to where we're at. I appreciate the invite, this has been my first opportunity to be in front of the council, and I wish it was something maybe not as contentious here, but nonetheless, I appreciate the opportunity. My goal for us is twofold, one, I want to have a relationship with the City of Plymouth, we are your fire department, we're very proud to be your fire department, and I want to make sure we're servicing this agreement correctly and we're, we're taking care of business. Number two, we want to do our part with the fire station, and to that end, we are willing to provide as much of the labor as we can to make those repairs, to perform that maintenance in-house with our on-duty crews. Of course, there'll be some things that are outside of our skillset that we can't do, but everything that we can do, we are more than happy to do in an effort to try to help the city. I know that's a lot of money we're talking about, I respect that, and I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to help that process. Lastly, I just want to be clear, and I'm probably stating the obvious here, so I'm sorry, but where that money come from, comes from is not, not in our purview, that's entirely up to this body here. But we're just, we just identified an issue, I'm trying to offer some solutions, how we can help with those solutions, and my hope is, this just turns into one more opportunity for us to work cooperatively with the City of Plymouth, which is, I think, all of our goals, so. I'll be available for questions if I can help with anything.
I just wanted to point out, because it keeps being referred to as Station 122, and the council has named that station Antonio Moreno Fire Station.
Sure, okay.
So, let's, let's give credit where credit is.
Sure, no problem, sure. Okay, unless there's any other questions for me? Again, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have others here at City Hall who would like to? We do, please come up.
Hello, Bill Claprock, Plymouth, city resident. I was just discussing at work today, actually, a various similar circumstance, which is risk reward, right? So, what risk do you take for what reward you're going to get? And I think that's exactly the decision before the council today. And council member McLaughlin so eloquently described was, we have a significant risk, I think, based upon what information's been provided. If we don't move forward with the change in scope, there's significant risk to lose funding altogether. However we got here, we got here, right? It is what it is kind of situation. I think there's other opposing, not opposing, but like other considerations. I think there was a, a, some sort of like survey that was distributed with a lot of other opportunities. I'm not sure the survey was done that well, needless to say, but there's things like utility assistance, food insecurity, mental health support, that there's significant opportunity within the county and the state for those existing programs regardless of, if COVID ever happened, right? Food insecurity, there's, there's things we can do for the community that exist. Utility assistance, significant programs as well as mental health support, right? Which is a very popular topic, I think, in, in all forums today. So, given that, I would just want the city council to determine what risk reward trade-off we have in this situation and support the change in scope for the grant funding to focus on the improvement of the fire, fire station.
Thank you. Anybody else here at City Hall?
Kirkell Claprock, from the City of Plymouth. Just wanted to say, I remember coming to a meeting one time, and I don't remember which, who was the fire station in charge of, but I remember him saying, they didn't even have a good chair that they could sit in, and I felt, how could this town does not have a good chair for the fire department? So, I just feel terrible hearing how bad the situation is in this building. So, I go forward and say I agree for the funds to go to the fire department. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Phelps.
A little bit louder.
This?
No, your voice.
Oh, my voice, okay.
Don't be shy.
I'm Patty Phelps, and I live in the City of Plymouth, and I guess I'm just kind of shocked that this is a contentious issue. The, when we were going to move here five years ago and had to get homeowner's insurance, I had to go to the fire station to get a letter from, saying that there is a fire station in this town, otherwise travelers wouldn't have given us homeowner's insurance. And any number of times, neighbors have needed the fire department to come help them, and they're there. So, like, why is this even an issue? We, we need to do the right thing and support the fire department the way they support us.
Thank you.
My name's Jim Wise, I am a resident of the City of Plymouth. I guess there's an old saying that everything that needs to be said has been said, but just not everybody has said it. Let me just, I don't know how we got here either, but the fact of the matter is, we've got a timing consideration if we want to use this money in a logical and constructive manner. Let me piggyback on what Patty just said. Two days ago, we got a phone call from the individuals that own one of the houses up in our neighborhood, telling us that their insurance underwriter was no longer going to cover insurance because of the fire hazard here in Plymouth. So, the lack of a fire station that is viable that's manned 24/7 now is going to compromise our ability to get homeowners and fire insurance. So, there's the risk of a lack of availability of insurance if we don't have a viable, up-to-date fire station operating here. So, in, in no particular order of a couple of issues, I'd like to just touch on real quickly, timeframe. We do have a timeframe by which this money has to be expended. Councilman McLaughlin made a terrific point, under the debt ceiling legislation, this COVID-related money is going to get clawed back big time by the feds. So, unless we can tie this money up as fast as we can, we really run the risk of losing this money. So, there's a federal consideration that really is at play here. The approval process for expenditures argues against anything that is long-term, to say nothing of the difficulty of understanding how you go through an approval process. And again, the important point is that any of these other, and very laudatory considerations for utilization of this money nevertheless requires the city to front-load this with no guarantee that the city is going to get reimbursed on the backside. So, it's a risk that the city is putting out there for anything that the city doesn't realize is going to get approved in the long run. Investing in city property and in, and, and the comment that it makes to our emergency responders can't be understated. This is an investment in real property that should the city ever want to do something with this property down the road, at least is an investment in a property that is going to pay dividends and come back and have rewards. I, I would hasten to add that I saw some of these surveys and some of these proposed expenditures of these funds, they're terrific, they're laudatory, and they should be something that the city should consider doing, but if it comes through city funds, then there's some discretion and there's some autonomy that the city has in understanding how to run these programs. That autonomy, that discretion does not exist if you're going to go after CDBG money for those types of programs. The requirements are much, much more strict. And, and I would hasten to point out that any business entity that received funding on that front side is no longer eligible for this under the CDBG program because they were reimbursed by non-CDBG money. So, every small business that got those loans is not eligible for any of this money. So, I don't know how many businesses that would be left in Plymouth that could potentially apply for other types of, of, of program money. And I guess my bottom line is that the utilization of funds for a known expenditure that will be approved and in a timely manner really argues for the, I think, timely expenditure of money that we know is going to ultimately come out of the city treasury anyway. Why not use Fed money to do something that we're going to have to look at at some point down the road? Let's save our own money for all these other laudatory programs that have been pointed out, that we've got the autonomy and the discretion to do later on. I thank you very much for.
Thank you. Anybody else here at City Hall who would like to make public comments?
John Coburn, City of Plymouth. I, I went through the, the 12 pages of, of information here, and it's very, very well-done, and it's, it's amazing that whoever put this together didn't apply for a city manager position. But anyway, it, it was well-done, but the, and going through this, it looks to me like they got about $2.5 million worth of projects here, and we got $250,000 worth of grants. So, you'd have to go through these and sort them out, and you'd have to have a committee that goes, they're assigned to do that, you have to go through it, and then have to come back to the city and, and make the decision on what you might or might not do. And then the possibility that, that, then you got to fight with the CDBG to see that they're, they're reimbursed, and it just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense that we could get all that accomplished with it before February. And so, some of the, the money for supporting the businesses that may have already failed, that ship has already sailed. The COVID issue of assisting those, those people that were in big need at that time, that ship has sailed. The money that was spent out that, that they didn't, okay, that somehow should be, I guess it's still out there on the books that these people, that you gave them money to, owe you, you have that money back, so that should be forgiven. I, I would, would make more sense. And some of these projects just don't make a lot of sense that they're in here. One of them, being buying of, of the Masonic Hall, and buying a piece of a historic building and then tearing it down, doesn't make a lot of sense. And some of the things about needing more community meeting places. We have a facility on a lodge hill that is currently not being used, very little, and we have other facilities with, all the facilities at the fairgrounds. So, to make an investment, substantial investment in more community areas for meetings is, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. But we do need to, as, as the city council, as responsible citizens, we need to support fire safety here in City of Plymouth. I think my, my opinion would be to move forward because it can be done in a timely manner with the repair of the firehouse. And, and that, that would honor the memory of the people that went to so much effort to put that, one of them has been Jack Holman, who was the mayor for many, many years, that ran junkets to Lake Tahoe to raise money to get that firehouse built, to all the Moreno family members that worked on all the benefits to, to get that firehouse built, it would honor those people to try to maintain what they worked so hard to get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jamie Labenco, Fiddletown resident.
Jamie Labenco, Fiddletown resident, Plymouth business owner. I'm actually one of the businesses that ship has sailed, as my dad previously mentioned. Prospect Cellars previously, but we do have Shannon Doig Excavating, a business here in town at this point. I just wanted to say that I also was one of the loan recipients at the, the beginning of this grant. So myself, Taste Restaurant, Rory's, several of our businesses received small loans at the beginning of COVID out of this fund. I don't think any of the businesses at that point in time really fully understood how much funding was coming. We were all very grateful for the small loans that we got at the beginning of COVID. I think at that point in time, we also didn't know how much, for lack of a better way to state it, COVID was coming, right? I mean, if you recall, when this all started, we, we thought we were going to be 30, 60, 90 days shut down. We didn't really think that the impacts to our businesses were going to be felt for the long period of times that they were felt. So we were all quite grateful to receive the loans at the, at the onset of this. Discovering that there was funding that could have helped businesses all along that wasn't spent, I mean, again, that ship has sailed, but it certainly is a little bit frustrating to know that now in hindsight. I missed the beginning of your meeting, I apologize for that. I was at a fair board meeting, so I didn't get the, the comments from your city manager, nor the comments from the council members. It, it appears to me that the opportunities, that some of these great ideas maybe could have taken advantage of, that the timing is not right for those. But I would like to say that there are some really good ideas in here in supporting your small businesses, supporting some of the efforts to revitalize buildings on Main Street, supporting programs for, for some of the kids. I even think the Masonic Hall Lodge, you know, community center might not be, you know, that might be a good idea. But if, if the council moves away from some of these ideas tonight, I would hope that and encourage you to keep this list and, and maybe we continue to work to find ways to, to do some of these projects. And I'm grateful, I mean, I, I guess it's been contentious, but I did receive communication from the people who put together this packet of ideas and, and it felt like their, their efforts were sincere. And so I just want to acknowledge that and thank them for reaching out to me as, as kind of one of our previous business owners. So anyways, thank you for your time. I just kind of wanted to offer that up and I like to say that we shouldn't let perfect to be the enemy of good and, and possibly funding the fire department improvements is a good project for us right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Don, I'm a Plymouth resident. Listening to all this, I think one thing I've heard from certain people is that I'm talking about this, is that it seems like more should have been done a couple of years ago. And it's almost feels like, and this isn't a reflection on the people sitting here now, most of you weren't on here, it's a one person's fault, but it's almost like the city council is saying, well, since we didn't do what we were supposed to do a couple of years ago, nobody did their job, now we're in a jam and let's just give away the money. As somebody who works in the fire service, I'm completely for fixing the firehouse, making repairs, doing whatever we have to do. It seems like what's going on is they're saying they can use all the money and just put it in one spot when there was, there's still people, and I've heard, I know some business owners in town, so they never knew about the money, and so they're still paying off bills. So I don't see why some stuff can't be done with the money at the firehouse, but maybe not the entire amount and why some of the money can't be used for other things. And it seems like we should be able to apply for more of these grants to fix the firehouse up as nice as we want it. I mean, they just got, I know they just got a pretty good one for the firehouse in Pine Grove, why can't we apply for something here? And maybe even do more than what's on the list. So that would be my thing. And also I think that having until February, I think February is quite a long time if somebody's actually working and doing it, you know, trying to, you know, to get things done. So I think there are businesses out there, like I said, I know some businesses that said they're still trying to pay off debt that they have. So, and I don't think you're talking a lot of money. I think you could help those people and still do quite a bit down at the firehouse. I'm all for, you know, it's fix the stuff we need to get done, you know, if there's serious issues at the firehouse, let's do that. But I think that there's grants out there available and maybe we should be looking at going after a grant just to repair our firehouse or make it nicer, fix what's there or make it nicer, expand on it or whatever. And maybe that's something we need to be looking into is just following up on a grant for that. But if this money was specifically for something else, at least some of it should go to that. So I see it both ways. I mean, like I said, I'm definitely all for let's get stuff, you know, the, the things that matter at the firehouse done, if there's anything that's a real issue, but let's also still look at all these other things the money was supposed to have been spent on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, Councilmember McLaughlin.
Just one point, just in diving in, I think it, it's pretty germane in this, is that the CDBG funds in this case cannot be used in essence to pay for lost revenue. I mean, I love your example, right? Just split up the money, find different ways. But, you know, like paying off debt for an existing business, there has to be a, a clear, unequivocal, hard, fast piece that COVID caused that debt, not from lost revenue, otherwise that expenditure is not eligible for the grant, right? I mean, this is the, the complexity of, and I'm, my, my statement's not so much pointed at you, I just think you, you brought it back to me in, in your comments. I'd love, nothing more than to find a way, but anyway, for your time, I'll stop there.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for understanding that. Anybody else here in City Hall who'd like to make, who'd like to comment to the council on this? Okay. How about on Zoom? It looks like we have a lot of people on Zoom and want to thank everybody for their patience. So let's start hearing from our folks who are on Zoom. And Dana, I'll just let you choose some type of order. Okay. Stephanie Moreno?
Thank you. First of all, I want to mention a point of order. The purpose of a public hearing is to gather public input before a council makes a decision. Typically, a public hearing is opened, public comments are solicited, and then council members speak. It appears at least two council members have indicated they've made up their mind tonight even be for a hearing, the public hearing comments. And so I'd like to encourage you to follow normal public hearing procedure in the future. Secondly, I want to respond to a couple of the comments that were made before I say what I was going to say. And I would point out that you allowed several speakers to go over three minutes, so I'm hoping I don't get the warning I got at the last meeting when I've never gone over three minutes. There seems to be a whole bunch of brand new CDBG experts in the room tonight. There's only one expert in this room as far as I'm concerned, and that's Valerie Kleinfeld. Councilmember McLaughlin had made many comments in his statements that were inaccurate. I don't know how else to say them. Provision of assistance to profit motivated businesses to carry out economic development and job creation retention activities is one of the primary eligible activities of CDBG. I've had an involvement with CDBG funds since the 1990s. Some of the things I heard tonight about you can't, if you got money, you can't get more money, that's just not true. You can't duplicate services. So if you got $5,000 for payroll, then you can't get more money for payroll if that's already been reimbursed. But if you need $5,000 for improvements for your ventilation system, that's a totally different thing. That's not duplicative services. The comment about the fire insurance has gone up or been canceled because of the lack of repair at the fire station is just absolutely untrue. There's no correlation between the repairs of the fire station and what the fire insurance companies are doing with fire insurance. That's just a threat to intimidate the council or the public into thinking that this is the only option as far as I'm concerned. There's plenty of public facility money available to repair the fire station if only the city council would apply for it. There's not plenty of money available that can help the businesses that are still struggling post-COVID. We've talked to a number of them over this period of time and they have not recovered. Some of them have, but most of them have not retained back, gone back to where they were before COVID. And those are legitimate expenses that can be helped with. The city manager mentioned that Collexo had a, a fire station project just like this and justifying that's why we should be able to do one. Collexico also allocated $150,000 to do loans to small businesses for COVID. So they were taking care of their small businesses too, before they took care of their fire station. And I don't doubt that fire station needs some repairs, but if you look at the laundry list that was in the public notice, they want to go beyond repairs and they want to do upgrades, they want to put equipment in that we're not responsible for, they want to change the size of the doors to make it more convenient for them, and they want to redo and build a whole office for themselves. And I think that our businesses come before some of those things do. I think some people have suggested maybe the money could be split. I think that's an excellent idea. Let's look at the essential repairs that are needed and fund those and then put the rest of the money to the residents and public members that are out there. I presented with Amy Gomes this survey on Facebook. The results are in your packet. They were late getting to you because we had to put a lot of time into it in order to get those presented for you. And I'm really disappointed that at least two council members have already indicated they've made up their mind without even reviewing those documents. If you look at them, a lot of people made a lot of comments and I think they're worth listening to. Only six people out of 59 thought that all of this money should go to the fire department. And getting 59 people to turn in a survey within 24 hours is indicative of the fact that people in this community care, people in this community are still suffering impacts of COVID, and people in this community want to be asked for their input and we're delighted to be able to give it. So I encourage you to not make a decision tonight, to take a look at the things on the list. If you want us to prepare budgets for some of those items, we'd be happy to do so, but to give some thoughtful consideration to how to balance the needs that have been presented to you for this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other hands up on Zoom? Okay, for those of you on Zoom, if there is anybody, it, it does look like Amy Gomes' hand is up. So I just want to make it clear for the people on Zoom, we're, we're, we're working through, taking public comment from those of you who have been waiting patiently on Zoom. So if you would like to make comment, please be sure to raise your hand so we don't miss you. Thank you. Amy? Ms. Gomes?
Yeah. My name's Amy Gomes, I'm a resident here. I didn't really, I'm not even sure where to begin. I, I guess I wanted to kind of bring your attention to the survey that was put out and did get 59 residents and business owners. I think there was 20 business owners and residents, residents, you know, that were, that had filled out that survey and I think it was 79% of them didn't know that this was an opportunity or a possibility for them. I know you didn't get this document and we really tried hard to get it out, but it, you know, it was kind of a struggle getting everything together and to you. But I just wanted to point out page four, if you have it, and th- these were the people that are your business owners that you see every day and the people that live next door to you. And 59% of them wanted to install lighting and, and at the park. And, and also I heard earlier tonight that these items could not be tied back to COVID possibly, and that's just not true. So the document that you received before this one had the authorities listed that showed where they did tie back to CB, CBDG funds. So if they're on this, they, they pertain. So 59% of the, of the people you see on a daily basis, you know, that you're walking around and looking at are not interested in spending all the money at, at the fire department. I'm not sa, I mean, I love the fire department. My kid, the day that we were dealing with the first paperwork, the fire department drove past like three times. My kid tried to, you know, do the fire, the truck honk with them, they gave him a sticker. I mean, I, I, there's nothing more that I want than to have a nice fire department building for them. However, I don't want to spend money on supplies for AFPD and I think that they should do repairs. And I also think that you can spend the $56,000 that is due to be spent February of 2024 on fire department, but the other money is not due to be spent. That's $200,000 due to be spent in October of 2024. That's over a year from now. And if we can't get something done in over a year, then what are we doing at all? So on page four, the first seven items were that are, you know, the business owners and residents wanted was to increase lighting, to acquire a lease, to protect the residents' long-term use of Plymouth School Run. All of those things are benefiting the community and the businesses. Purchase acreage, these were different ideas that they had. Purchase acreage, they want, people want parks and that's part of CBDG funds. People want to pay for their businesses to have outdoor improvements. And also on, on page five and six, the data is split up between business owners and then residents. And it's really interesting to look at and see what businesses ask for in Plymouth and what res, you know, resident, residential people ask for. And I found it, I mean, like was heart, it was, made me happy to see the business owners actually picking things for their community because most of them live here. They didn't just choose things for themselves or want, you know, all, you know, to do all the different business items. They chose things for the kids too. And also someone here, I think it was Mr. Capra, mentioned that he didn't know if this, how well the survey was done, and I would be happy to show my data to you. So what my, what I'm suggesting is that yes, we all want the fire department to be, to have what they want. And I, and someone said they didn't have a chair tonight, you know, maybe AFPD needs to deal with chairs. I don't think that's my responsibility actually, but I, I think that we can get this done and I don't know if everyone's seeing the fact that we can, we can have someone else manage these funds. If, you know, it's, it's a, it's been a big job for me to do a lot of this work and work full-time and be a single mom and homeschool my kid, but I'm getting it done and we've been getting it done. So it's doable and I would like to be thought of as a help rather than it's some kind of problem that we got to come up with spending this money. This is exciting and it's been exciting for the community also. So I'm asking, if you want to spend the money, you know, spend $56,000, put a roof on or maybe spend a little more, whatever. But nobody's reaching out to the businesses. Each business had a, had such a good way to help them just a little bit that would have made a big difference. If we don't have businesses here, everyone's complaining about businesses. We don't have any downtown. And this is the time we have funding for that and no one wants to actually grab it and say, let's do it. I just, I'm kind of surprised. So anyway, that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Do we have other people on Zoom who would like to make comments during the public comment? Ms. Scanlon?
Yes, good evening. Now I'll speak and my apologies for speaking out of order earlier. While I deeply appreciate the efforts of Stephanie Moreno and Amy Gomes or Gomez, whichever way she chooses to pronounce it, I don't know where to start. I think the council has done a really good job of explaining the pickle we're in and the logistics of it. And while I mourn the fact that the monies weren't spent the way that they were supposed to be spent, when they were supposed to be spent, and that the community wasn't made aware of them, you can't unring that bell. And the way I look at it is that you're doing your best to try to make lemonade out of the lemons that have been handed. And I think that a lot of the needs that have been identified by the community and the survey and all the different things, those are all wonderful, commendable, laudable things that should be addressed. And if nothing else, I think that this issue has really helped to galvanize a community to see that the needs that are there and what things can be done through the city, through funding, through other grants, through the ambassador program and through working collaboratively to try to address those needs. But the bottom line is, my people-minded approach to it is, it looks like we're in a pickle with regard to utilizing those funds in the most expeditious, efficient way possible without having to risk the fact that they may not be approved. Enough said. Thank you for letting me. Enough said. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Do we have others on Zoom who would like to comment? Okay. Okay, I, I, I just want to take a, want to say one more time to anybody on Zoom who would like to make comment on this agenda item. Now is your opportunity. So if you want to make a comment, please be sure to raise your hand. And it doesn't look like, agree? Okay, okay. So at this time, I'm going to close this to public comment. And bring this back to the council for discussion.
I think there's, because of the way this was presented in the agenda, there is a little bit of misunderstanding. The, the only portion of this, and Amy um, touched on that, the only portion that has to have a decision made immediately or before immediately are the CB one funds. And the project is, needs to be wrapped up in February. There's still time to have the public engagement and decide what to do with the other two hundred and four thousand. It doesn't have to be, it, the agenda is grouping them all together. And I, and I really wanted to point out that they are separate beings. They're separate. And CB one is the only one, the fifty-six thousand dollar grant is the only one that has to have something done with it. There's been a lot of misinformation running around. Everybody's a CDBG expert now. This is a great example and I want to thank all of the public, everyone that's here, everyone that um, engaged, every, the, the two women that prepared this. I'd like to hire them. This is an example of how we should be doing things and engaging the public from the very beginning of these processes. And then we would never be here. So I would like us to make a decision on the CB one tonight and then um, retain the ability to, in a month, after looking at everything, make the decision on the CB two and CB three, which are not due till October twenty-four.
I have a, a question for Ms. Roberts. Is, as far as um, two, numbers two and three, when, when are those due? Both and?
The deadline to turn in is October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four?
For both?
That, for both? That's to have all expenses turned in?
Okay, thank you. Um, other council comments, and I'm going to try to go somewhat in order here. Councilmember McLaughlin? Any further comments, questions?
Uh, you know, I, there's, you know, some, really just some great work that's been, been done uh, by Ms. Marino and, and Ms. Gomes. I think, you know, it's getting the conversation started with a ton of, of great ideas. You know, I want to thank our, our residents and our business owners for, you know, taking the time to weigh in, to be able to provide, you know, the information and insight. And there's absolutely projects in, in here that we need to not let die, no matter what the course is going forward. That we need to champion and we need to find a way to fund them. Um, and I think has been mentioned, there's some projects that already have, you know, funding out there. It's just a matter of tying the two together. This is a, you know, you know, as it's been, you know, it's talked about, you know, the ship has sailed, the bell has been rung, other analogies. And, and for me, I say we, you know, we have a, a mess here. And when I use the word we, is the day I, I raise my right hand and, and take the oath of office, whether it was as a fire chief or, or sitting here today. It doesn't matter what happened before. Now I own and I'm responsible for whatever that piece is. It's not about blaming backward. It's about looking forward and trying to find the best resolve um, going forward. You know, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, I have, you know, based off of the report that I've seen with this fire station, my concern is finding a point or reaching a point of this station becoming, you know, a, a health and safety piece to where it's uninhabitable or at least close enough to the point because there's the habit, the habitable piece. And then there's the workplace occupational safety standards, which are entirely different than what we would consider to be habitable for our own homes or houses. Um, because it's a workplace situation. If we find ourselves there, those, that crew is going to be moved somewhere else. Maybe we're lucky and it'll be at the fairgrounds or maybe someplace else. But if that crew can't live there, it has to go somewhere. I don't know what that would look like, but it's a real risk. Um, you know, I think John Colveron made a good point that we need to process and pare down the projects. And, and um, I'm, I'm grateful that uh, you know, Ms. Gomes offered to do some of that work to be able to pare it down. And I believe maybe it was Ms. Marino, but I know both have been um, absolutely interchangeable and it's great work um, to uh, pare it down um, and, and create budgets for some smaller pieces. I'm still processing through, you know, some of the options and, and uh, in specifics. But, you know, we definitely have a problem force. We have a short period. And I just want to close by saying that per the grant guidelines, we have till the end of February and till the end of October next year. But with a debt ceiling legislation that was just approved by the president, that money could go away tomorrow. And those grant li- deadlines would be null and void. They'd be nonexistent because that money hasn't been obligated. And that's just a risk that we would be, we would be taking if um, you know, we weren't further engaged. So um, that would be my only concern and I'm moving through something very expeditiously. So, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
First off, I'd like to thank the public, everyone from the public for their comments. Um, I'd also like to um, a lot of individuals tonight said, and I'll, and I'll use our new fire chief. He said that this is just part of, you know, I, I, you know, it, it wasn't like, okay, you know, I need that money. And I understand that you need the money. But the COVID and the, the fire thing were a separate thing with AFPD. And I kind of want to make that clear, that even our new fire chief brought that up. This really sucks for me because um, it deals with everything that I'm so passionate about. I'm passionate about small pi- business. I'm, I'm passionate about youth projects and I'm passionate about first responders. And I hate to say it, I mean, I just am sick to my stomach right now with the whole thing. Um, and um, I said something previously in the previous meeting about a city manager fake it till you make it. Um, when we were doing the five thousand dollar loans, I basically was like, yeah, we need to get money into our small businesses. We need to. Um, I always thought the understanding was is every small business got approached. Um, then we found out that that came out of TOT money. And I guess that makes me just sick to my stomach. Um, because when it was presented, no, this is a way, you know, for our businesses to get these non-refundable loans. Of course, I'm going to support that. Um, so that's just kind of where I'm sitting right now with it.
Sick to your stomach is a good description.
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Mayor Sim?
I have a question for Frank or Margaret. If, if we allocate CB one, uh, do we jeopardize two and three for the fires, for the firehouse? Can it be separated and, and, and done in, in parcels? Or does it have to be all done all in one parcel? In other words, if we approve one for the fire station, and later on, are we jeopardizing two and three at a later date? For the same purpose?
No, it will be a hard sell to do, it will be hard. Amendments are done on a case-by-case basis. It will be hard for HCD to take CB one to do the rehab on the fire station with only fifty-six thousand dollars. And then ask them to later, if we allocate, if we want to take CB two and three back, because they have to take it to HUD.
Right.
To get that.
So we, we could be jeopardizing that, two and three.
So two and three, if we later, if you later decided you wanted to take those two, HCD for an amendment for the fire station, might be a little bit more difficult. But not impossible.
That's all right. Thank you.
But you could leave CB one the way it is and later take CB two and three for an amendment if you chose to do that. Or you can leave them all the same. And not jeopardize any of them.
Yeah, I, I sit here too and, and feel like we're in, we're in, in, in quite the pickle. And it, it, it doesn't feel good and, you know, here, here we are regardless. Um, I also want to thank the community, um, everybody who came and spoke tonight. Um, Amy and Stephanie, all the hard work that you have done on this. Um, I also want to reiterate what um, Jamie LeBanco said about the encouragement that there had been some needs and some programs that have been identified that are important. Everything from food insecurity to helping our businesses. Um, we have pages and pages of wonderful ideas. Um, I do think that there is a CDBG expert that we haven't spoken about and we haven't mentioned. Um, that person is not in this room tonight. And that is, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren with HCD. Um, in my opinion, there's our CDBG expert who has suggested that if we continue the proposed course, we're really going to run into some difficulty. Or we, we might run into some difficulty. Lauren has offered as a suggestion to make repairs to the fire station. I myself have been to the fire station and toured it. And it needs repair. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I think we all understand that. So we can continue with the original plans of where this grant was headed. And we take the chance of being denied reimbursement. Despite all of the great ideas, I am not willing to gamble right now. It feels like a gamble to me to do that. And I'm not willing to gamble with the city's money, with the community's money, with the taxpayers' money. If we have a CDBG consultant, Lauren, giving this advice might not be what we had really wanted from the beginning. I feel like we would be foolish not to follow that advice. Any other comments? Okay, at this point, I am looking for council direction. Or I would entertain a motion?
I think there's a person on Zoom who has a question.
We have, uh, thank you, but we have closed public comment.
Is the mo- motion bundled?
If, if we could take the resolution regarding the signature separately and first? And that applies to CB one for all the grant applications and amendments.
I'll ma- I'll make a motion. A resolution approving an amendment to the standard agreement for the twenty-twenty community development block grant program for coronavirus response, round one, CDBG, CB one, NOFA dated June fifth, twenty-twenty.
I'll be taking the resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-seven, designating the city manager as the authorized person to execute those agreements as the motion first that you're looking at.
Right there, what, what, what resolution?
Well, I couldn't do all three in one, in one motion. I do, want to do as, all three. That's correct. Yes, I want to make a motion for all three. Well, I think you, you understand what I'm trying to say.
Well, that's all we can say about.
Yeah. I want to make a motion for all three. That's correct.
That was clear enough?
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's not quite clear to me. Kelly, are you able to just kind of clarify what we have going on here?
Um, a motion, yes, I'll try.
Thank you.
Um, a motion was made to approve um, the grants um, for CB one, CB two and three to um, approve of the resolution twenty-twenty-three, twenty-seven and to designate the city manager as the authorized person to execute those agreements. And um, approve twenty-twenty-three, twenty-eight and twenty-twenty-three, twenty-nine, which are for both grants to be combined and to um, to take the option of repairing the fire station if those grants are approved.
Okay, it was moved and seconded? So can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Just because we're in a pickle, aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
If we weren't in a pickle, we'd be doing something different. Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I'm going to vote no, and it is about the process more than it is about the repairs. Um, we, the city has not, not shown the ability to implement these projects. And I, so I just have to vote no.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackland?
Aye.
The motion passes four to one. The motion passes four to one.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We have another agenda item. Uh, want to ask the council and city staff, is anybody feeling the need to take a, like a ten minute break, or would you like to work through this?
I think the, the budget issue might be something that we want to review at home for a few days, provide comments back to Margaret and then bring back because if we've, we've been here, I think we're all getting like rummy with, and so throwing in all those numbers at the same time might be a little much for tonight.
Can I go over just a couple of things that have come up for you to consider while you're reviewing? So I met with the sheriff today. And, um, they are requesting an increase to their budget to the dollar amount of four hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred, four twenty-three, four twenty-seven and twenty cents. Yes, so, um, Mary, our finance director, is looking for some grants and we're looking for ways to cut money in the budget. We know there's no way we can come up with that amount of money. So, um, I just wanted to give you that piece of information. And also, the second piece of information and the only other piece of information I want to give you is that General Services Administration with the county gave, um, a contract asking for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. I asked for a, the amount of number of calls they provided in a twelve month period, which was eight. And our fire service contract is thirty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. I asked for calls for service in that same amount of, that exact same timeframe. They did a hundred and thirty-nine calls for service. So animal control would be forty-six hundred doll, forty-six hundred dollars per call versus two hundred and thirty-three calls per service for the fire service. And they're here twenty-four seven. So I would not recommend the contract for animal services, but I just wanted to let you know that that came in. I'm not recommending that we enter into an agreement with animal control. I did talk to that, this about the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department did say they do respond to barking call complaints, they do respond on any vicious animal call, and they just wanted us to be aware that they do respond to those anyway. So for that, that's. If, if, I was going to say, if we're going to table this, yeah.
And I, I'm going to say, even though you're tabling it, we are having a discussion on it, so you probably need to have a public comment too.
So I need to what?
But a public comment too. Because we're not, we, we didn't table it, we just tabled most of it, but we started the conversation, so.
Okay, okay, got it.
If I could make just a suggestion, I mean, I know there's lots of numbers as, as, uh, as Councilmember Kleinfeldter pointed out, but it'd be great to get a, a staff report on the overall budget priorities that are included in, the direction, the strategy, some of the higher level pieces, so that as we go through numbers, there's some context in what we're looking at, um, because we're quickly moving to the point of needing to approve our budget, so.
I think we interrupted your interrupted your train of thought. I hope not. I didn't put any new priorities in the budget. I left things status quo trying only to increase where I saw increases come in this year in terms of increasing where such as chlorine prices increased, I had to raise that budget line item because we have to have chlorine at the pool and the wastewater treatment plant in order to keep those things in line. I gave you more detail in the budget as you asked for. Um, I hope it is what you're, the detail that you're looking for. I don't know, with, with no discussion really tonight, I don't know if you want to do a special meeting to go over the budget or just bring it back next meeting for discussion and adoption. I don't know what the council's wish is for that. I, since the council doesn't have any goals in place, I don't have any way to put priorities into the budget. So I, I really tried to keep it as much status quo as possible. I, I would support, under the circumstances, I would support a special meeting sooner rather than later.
We cannot, we cannot have it next Thursday because there is going to be a planning commission meeting.
Okay.
So next Thursday is out.
It doesn't have to be on a Thursday, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay, good to know. Planning commission meeting. Okay. Um, so how's everybody feel about a special meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I I'm, my thought process is that it would be like a workshop.
Okay.
Where we work together and, and it goes back and forth a little bit, think outside the box a little bit and go, oh no, that box won't work.
Please, that would be wonderful. Okay.
Do you want to pick a date?
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Well, I want to make sure that we're giving the opportunity for, um, being we are having a discussion, that we are giving the opportunity for public comment on this. And, um, so anybody here in City Hall have public comment they'd like to present with regard to item point seven one, which is our budget? How about on Zoom? I, I see some hands up. Stephanie, you have your hand up? We're.
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to support what Councilmember McLaughlin just said about needing more detail and pri, and talk, discussion about priorities before adopting the budget. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Um, secondly, I don't think status quo is going to work. Um, I think that you're going to have to look, it sounds like it's some cutbacks. Um, there's been a significant increase in personnel costs, especially over the last four or five years since we've been through these city managers with not a lot of thought given to that, and I think that that needs to be looked at. Um, and I'd like to see more detail, more of a budget narrative, um, about the specific things, particularly personnel, and if the salary tables that are included in the budget documents include, um, either cost of living or merit increases, or if they're exactly where they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I see another hand up. Oh, okay, okay. Is there any other public comment on Zoom for this item? Okay, so I'll go ahead and close item seven point one to, uh, public comment. And do we want to come up with a date now for a special meeting? The same night as bingo at Lodge Hill, um, I, I think that. No, I could skip bingo.
Oh, you can skip bingo? Aye.
Uh, okay.
Can I go to bingo?
Okay, never mind, um. I'm good with Wednesday, the fourteenth. Okay. Did we talk about Monday, the twelfth?
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday.
Monday's fine for me too.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm sorry, what were you saying about Monday?
How are you, Margaret? From Monday?
Monday?
I'm good, Monday.
Valerie, Monday? Thank you. Monday, the twelfth? And what, what, what time do we, do we, we like to start? I'm hearing the earlier the better, but. Okay. Okay. Okay, so should we move to Tuesday, the thirteenth? Okay. Six P M? Okay. All right, so we'll have a special meeting, a, a budget workshop, Tuesday, June thirteenth at six P M. Okay. At this point, we will move on to item eight, city manager report. I'll try to make it brief. Um, we just talked about bingo at Lodge Hill at six thirty P M. The pool is open for the summer. Um, we already talked about the ambassadors raking the cemetery. Last night, I met with the residents at Zinfandel Ridge and advised them of things that are happening within the city and did a answer, question and answer, um, period with a variety of topics. I thought it went very well. And Pizza in the Park started last night, which will happen every Wednesday night from five thirty to eight through September. And last night, they sold out at seven o'clock and they said, next week they'll bring more pizza dough so they can serve more people. And that's my report. Thank you. Councilmember reports. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as with the ambassadors, as been mentioned, you know, we had a, a, a great project yesterday. We're going to have a couple more days of, um, you know, raking leaves and, and moving debris, but, you know, we're going to, but, you know, I'll be meeting um, with Margaret and Kathleen Johnson and then Cameron Begbie with Lava Dog, who is, um, as we've talked about, is, I guess, he and our co-captains and, and working to leverage this forward, but certainly be doing a recruitment and trying to get, you know, more folks involved, really, it's a, um, it, I think is, uh, as Bill Claproth pointed out, that it's really a, you know, it, I guess builds character, builds spirit, builds things, you know, you're out there, you know, it's community, helping community, so it's a good thing. The one, uh, significant, I guess, report I have is I met with, um, Michelle Tyer and Alan, um, McNaney with, uh, American Legion Ambulance, um, last week to discuss, um, you know, response and coverage um, with, as a result of many of the concerns that have been raised, um, here in the community. Um, you know, ultimately, leading up to about a month ago, maybe it's been six weeks, up to that point, there'd been regular brownouts and a brownout is basically, um, a station is still open, but it may not be staffed on a given day because they're unable to get staffing back, where a blackout would be like a fully closed station. Um, but, but as a rule, the station was closed, um, quite extensively. Um, and, uh, as we talked through a number of things that, um, that, you know, the ma, mandatory vaccination for personnel um, during COVID, um, resulted in, you know, the loss of, you know, ten, so they went from twenty-four to fourteen paramedics over that period through attrition, plus a mandatory vaccination. And we also had a two-year period where all paramedic schools were closed, so there weren't new people coming up through the channel. Um, you know, they reported to me that Medic Five, um, is currently basic life support. It hasn't been browned out in, over a month, and that they have four paramedics coming, um, onboard within the company this month with their plan then of moving Medic Five back to ALS at that point. And then their ultimate goal would be to add a sixth BLS unit in the county that would be more focused on some of the inter-facility work. Um, they shared for me that, um, that, uh, as a result of some of the behavioral health challenges and the need to transport as far away as Santa Rosa or Yuba City, um, they created a unit, um, that's basically an on-call unit with, you know, it's like retired firefighters, EMTs, paramedics that basically are driving behavioral health people to these facilities, so we're not taking an in-service nine, nine-one-one BLS or ALS ambulance out of the system, which is a huge step. Um, I mean, we talked about move up in cover and levels of coverage and, you know, they identified it as they drop down to what's called level one, having one unit available in the system. If it's a BLS system, then one of their managers, you know, will cross staff. Um, you know, obviously we have a county that's a, a big challenge, but, um, you, you know, for me, what I really asked for them is I would, I asked them to provide, uh, some, you know, very detailed data. I want, you know, I want to see call volume, I want to see the breakdown of call volume of ALS versus BLS, I want to see the types of calls we're running, and those that are ALS, how many of those were code three returns? Or should have been code three returns, so that we have a level of understanding of the, the, the coverage needs in our community. We know that our call volume is, you know, in Plymouth and its surrounding areas, you know, not just strictly the city limits, is about thirty-five calls a month, and so the call volume isn't big, but long response times are important, right? And so it's balancing those two out. Um, I asked for ninetieth percentile of the response time, I looked for unit hour utilization, meaning how often is this uni, bit, unit busy during a given twenty-four hour period or an assigned period? How long is it available in quarters versus being available in the Plymouth District versus not being in the district at all? And really trying to understand what is our level of service. The challenge for where we're geographically located is the next bump up spot would be, you know, basically Sutter Hill. Well, that's twenty minutes, you know, we drive the equivalent speed of code three every time we go to Lowe's because there, you know, there's no lights and that's how fast you go, right? And, um, and so, y, the key is, is, you know, for us starting off was, all right, you know, let's, let's have data. If the data is not good, we, let's find a way to work together because, you know, you know, I guess was a rising sea raises all ships, right? If we can, um, you know, collaborate and find ways to improve levels of service, then we all win by it. And so, um, I'm, I'm hopefully optimistic. Um, I think it was a good meeting overall and my intent would be, um, you know, working with Margaret and, you know, package this up into some degree of a comprehensible report and, and maybe put it out to the city's Facebook page or something to just, you know, keep our community informed. We are paying attention, so. Um, anyway, that is all. Sorry to be long-winded yet again.
Thank you for that amazing report.
Okay, um, I went to the Memorial Day celebration. It was amazing. I want to thank the Rotary. I want to thank Jimmy LeBanco and Cameron Bigsby, um, and Mr. Steiner for all the speaking and the talking. It was, it was an amazing event. Um, I also went to, uh, Pizza in the Park last night. Mr. Slusser himself cooked my pizza for me and it was delicious. And, uh, I'm very excited that they're going to be there every Wednesday. And I'm, hey, I'm looking forward to Fourth of July. I heard you, I heard we got a band that's going to play at Fourth of July, so I'm looking forward to that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Keith. Uh, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I will be attending a League of California Cities meeting on Monday. I will, um, provide Margaret with future agenda items and as usual, I will get legislative updates to the council.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Sim, sorry.
I would like to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, McLaughlin for, for putting together the, uh, the effort up at the cemetery. It was, it was well done. I, I think it's, it's going to be wonderful. You're ahead of it now and we, you know, I know you have other projects uh, in front of us. One, I guess, we're going to paint the, the picket fence around the park. Looking forward to that. Apparently we need, probably need to make a, a few more phone calls in the future. I'll, I'll be pulling to that, get, get a few more people out. But, uh, thanks again for doing it. It was, it was a, it was a nice day. Thank you.
Um, I want to add on, well, first of all, I, I did, uh, earlier this afternoon, I did get a call from Jamie LeBanco because she did not think that she could make it tonight. She specifically asked me to pass along her thanks to city staff for the wonderful job that they did with assisting with the memorial. for the wonderful job that they did with assisting with the Memorial Day event. And I want to also add that I was happy I was able to attend that. And it was such a nice event and so well-attended. It was an honor to be there. So she's not here for me to say it. We've all said it. Thanks to Jamie for putting that together, especially under the, the circumstances with, with Jamie has going on. And everybody who participated, it was very moving. And, and then also, I also want to thank Margaret's support with that and the city staff and their efforts in that. And then, of course, thank Rotary for what a wonderful job. And that's all I have for right now. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Recording stopped.